I'll call this meeting of the Clackamas County Commission to order and welcome you back after the Fourth of July break. And with that, I'll ask for the roll call.
Commissioner Damon?
Here.
Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Leininger?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Leehan?
Here. And with that, I will ask you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve the order of agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the order of the July 12, 2012 business meeting agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Leininger that we approve the order of agenda. Is there any comment or discussion? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye passes 5-0 and is unanimous, and that brings us to citizen communication. Citizen communication is an opportunity to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda or on items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for public comment. It is limited to items of county business for the board as a whole to consider and should not be of a personal nature. If you wish to speak, you can fill out a blue card like this and hand it back to the clerk. In most cases, if you have an issue that you need a response to, it should also be submitted in writing along with the best way that we can get back to you because sometimes staff will need to get back to you sometime after the meeting. And with that, the first card I have is Charles Savoy, perhaps? Not sure about the - to spell it.
Good morning. Charles Savoy, Stewart and Negotiating Team Representative for Teamsters Local 223 AMR Bargaining Unit. On January 12, the board unanimously proclaimed as a matter of policy it would make projects that result in jobs that provide living wages and benefits a priority in selecting contracts to be issued. The Northwest Oregon Labor Council takes such commitments seriously and as members of the council, Teamsters 223 hopes that all the commissioners do as well. While the language in the proclamation was focused on a narrow type of projects, it would be reasonable to infer that this commitment would be expanded outward. We expect the board to consider this when weighing the potential impact that issuing an RFP for ambulance services will have on the paramedics and EMTs who provide ambulance services to the public. The language in the current and proposed revision of the ASA Plan at 10.01.06OP states, "At the end of the term of agreement for ambulance services, the board may extend the agreement, renegotiate the agreement, or seek a service provider by a method recommended by the county administrator." The board has the authority to continue the ASA contract with the current ambulance service provider. Teamsters 223 joins the fire chiefs of seven Clackamas Fire Departments and TVFNR in their opposition to an RFP being issued and in their support of an evergreen contract being negotiated with AMR. Continuing the contract with the current provider, which is a unionized company, is a certain course that will result in employees maintaining the decent wages and benefits that are due to many years of negotiations. If the commissioners issue an RFP that results in selection of a different provider, the process of negotiation will have to begin over again unless the commissioners make a condition of the RFP that any bidder shall be required to equal or exceed wages and benefits being paid to the employees under the current CBA. Without such a condition, the employees would potentially suffer losses of between 20% and 50% of their current income depending on their years of service. We've heard the commissioner state that they want an ASA contract that is based on apples-to-apples comparison. We agree and expect the course to be followed that will not even possibly result in a contract that is based on a lower price that is in any part due to lower wages and benefits being paid to the paramedics and EMTs who perform the services. We strongly encourage the board to protect the employees who would be affected by making it a condition of the RFP that any bidder will be required to recognize the employee's union and accept the employee's existing CBA in situ should the board decide not to negotiate a continuance of the contract with AMR. Furthermore, issuing an RFP is not without substantial risks. An exposure of the citizens of Clackamas County to these risks without compelling evidence of a high likelihood of a greater benefit resulting is reckless. The citizens deserve an answer as to why the board has chosen to pursue an RFP rather than negotiate with the provider that every commissioner has publicly stated has provided excellent service. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And then I should be calling people two at a time. I neglected to do so. The next two I have are Shirley Woods and Jim Sanders. You can come up and give your name and address and - or at least your name and city, name and place.
Good morning. This is my first time. I am Shirley Woods and my husband is Aaron Woods. We are residents in Clackamas County and we've lived in Clackamas County since 1996. And I'm here this morning to look you all in the face, to tell you that you are doing a wonderful and outstanding job. And I appreciate the fact that I live in Clackamas County. I've watched Clackamas County grow from the beginning of 1996 when we moved here until where we are now. And I really enjoy living here and I appreciate you, and that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, mine's a little different. Jim Sanders, Milwaukee, name's on file. Good morning. I see you're all here. It's kind of a red-letter day, actually. It's a little disheartening to come here and speak to you. It's one of the reasons I haven't been here in a while because I firmly believe that it falls on deaf ears. Most of you were put in these chairs by a vote of the people, yet you don't listen to the very people that put you there. It's truly astounding to me. And as a matter of fact, you actually fight us. It's exactly like you really don't care about what the majority of the people want. You fought us on the bridge fee, we won. You fought us on the urban renewal, and we won. Now you're fighting us again on the light rail measure. It will pass and we will win. And all along the way, you're wasting money. You could have put the light rail measure on the ballot with a swipe of a pen. Instead, it's going to be a special election, it's going to cost upwards to $125,000. Having said all that, it's obviously that you have set the bar pretty low for yourselves. However, the next set of facts will solidify your place in history with an even lower bar. The average income in Clackamas County is upwards of $42,000. As a commissioner, you make $81,000 plus, full benefits and purrs, which totals $127,000. Commissioner Bernard's wife is the Director of Tourism for Clackamas County and she makes about the same. Your house, sir, takes in approximately a quarter of a million dollars a year of taxpayers' money. Let's not forget about Bernard's garage. Let's just toss another 100 grand on that, just for grins. But you, sir, have the audacity and the gall to ask the commission to pay for your ethics committee defense with taxpayers' money. This reeks of cronyism. This is outrageous and inexcusable. And to make it even worse, you guys voted in three to one. Commissioner Savis was the only guy that saw the absurdity of this action. Elections are coming and there will be new faces. New faces like John Ludlow, for instance, who will listen to the people and actually cares. You know, I'm really glad that there's going to be an election because we're really tired of you guys. Thank you.
The next two I have are Yvonne Lazarus and Les Poole.
Good morning. I'm Yvonne Lazarus from Milwaukee. On Tuesday night, I went before the Planning Commission and I had some questions for them. First, I got ahold of Pat and she sent me a memorandum. And the question that I asked her, it says, "Yvonne Lazarus submitted a public information request to the city on May 22 requesting a list of conditions for approval on the Kellogg Lake Bridge master land use WG 1101 and trolley trail modifications mastered that have not been met as of May 22." So I went back down there to find out if anything had changed since then. And I went in and I spoke with a Julie Howard who, by luck, connected me up with Brett Kevner. And this is what he answered me. It says, "Thanks for your phone call this afternoon regarding your request of information for the status of the modification to the trolley trail and that were approved through land use file and that number. To date, we have not received a development review application for those modifications." And I asked him to kind of explain things. And he said, "A developer review application is the mechanism that will be used to ensure the conditions of approval from MOD-11-01 are properly implemented. I have not heard anything about when we might expect to receive a development review application for the modification approved by MOD-1101." What I would like is for - because this has not happened, the way I'm seeing it, then who's watching to see that things are being done correctly and what we're supposed to be getting? So as the Parks - the Board of Parks, I would like you to look into this and to get back to me. And the other thing, because it said on my card that I was going to talk about the Elks, I just would like to kind of know what's going on there, too. If you could - somebody could email me. I think you have my email, do you not?
I'm pretty sure we do.
Yep.
Staff has written these things down and they will -
I would appreciate -
And we'll have somebody get back to you.
Okay. Will it be soon?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for clarification's sake, you went to the city of Milwaukee and talked to Pat Duval, the staff of the city of Milwaukee?
Yes, yes, yes.
You didn't identify that. First, I wasn't sure who you talked to.
Oh, I thought I did when I was reading the papers.
Well, okay, but you didn't identify who Pat Duval was or who Julie was?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
I just want - I know those people, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me, on that note, Madam Chair, I'd just like to make sure that staff - I'll wait for Laurel to make eye contact. Make sure that staff, if there is a role for the Parks District for that design piece, I'd like to - I'd be interested to know what role the county plays in that.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Knowing that it is in Milwaukee partially or fully or -
It's almost fully in Milwaukee. Thank you. Les?
Les Poole, Oak Grove. I looked up the agenda this morning for today's meeting and got a look at the improved website. I don't know who all did the technical work, but it's really nice, well done. Little easier to navigate. The agenda for today was right there and a great picture of all of you seated right here in front where we'd like to see in the future. I wasn't going to talk about the trolley trail, but just to clarify a few things, the general concern that Yvonne is expressing is that you wear many hats. One of them is the directors of the Parks District. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's very conflicting or difficult for you to be facilitating light rail and then somehow watching out for the trolley trail, which has been a real bone of contention and a major concern of mine. Over and over, the controversy over light rail in Milwaukee in terms of the county has been the $140 million extra dollars to extend it past Lake Road where it was originally going to end and mandated to end if the money wasn't there to get to Park Avenue.
It was.
We had 1,200 cars that were going to be taken off the highway. The parking structure at Tacoma, the parking structure at Park Avenue, they disappeared in the attempt to strip down the light rail line and get the undesirable terminus, the parking and the negatives beyond Milwaukee. Commissioner Bernard happens to own property in the Lake Road South Downtown area and obviously would benefit to the detriment of the county if the line is extended all the way to Park Avenue. And the concerns the citizens have are, of course, the county entered into an agreement that, in my opinion, has some holes in it. Obviously, I've spoken to a lawyer, so I'm not down here just flying by the seat of my It is the responsibility of the county to be careful with our money these days because times are different, folks, and we all know that. One of the last things I want to say is I'm really concerned about some of the spending priorities because we truly are on a difficult path. I question the sustainability of some of the spending and commitments that are made. And in terms of the sheriff's concerns about taking money from Clackamas Town Center Urban Renewal and not returning it to that area that's built up, that has higher crime, higher costs, more traffic, more people, more needs, and putting it in the general fund and then using it to pay for this extension of light rail. It's not a good idea and I don't need to be this person to tell you that over and over again, but you're going to continue to hear that.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next card I have is Mary Anna Moore.
Yes. Mary Anna Moore from Gladstone. It's been a while since we missed a meeting last week and I wanted to comment on how nice the celebrations were, the parades in Canby and Molal. I walked in both and lots of people out, a lot of patriotism, and it was really great. And so I did that and then since then, there's been a lot of things going on. And I went out to Damascus for their meeting and I was so impressed with their room. They had the Constitution and Declaration of Independence up there in the front. I come here and it's all blank and I think we need to be reminded of what those documents say and that we've been talking about putting them on the wall for a long time and it seems like a really small thing to do that. So I request that maybe that could be done. Then, last week, Gladstone City Council met and there was a lot of testimony. The librarian put in a resignation and there was a lot of things about the library and we have a new council member who got up and said, "I think we should put the vote on the ballot." So, we're going to have a vote in November on whether we're going to build this library. And there was some - we had lawyers, the city lawyers and the lawyer for the petitioner. And of course, the petitions passed to require a vote. And apparently, there has been some conversation here with the county and I would like to know how that affects us and what your position is now with the Gladstone Library and the money that they've already spent, almost a million, in just planning this thing. And where we stand for that, if you could answer me on that. Mr. Madcor?
I'm not involved in the conversations, Ms. Moore.
Okay, all right. Well, then perhaps you can send me an answer, someone on the council or the attorney or -
We can send you an update. We have your address?
I'm sure you do. And - Yes.
Or email, whatever you prefer.
I'm not sure that you have my email, but I can give it to you. I think actually I gave you my credit - my business card that has it on there.
Don't give us your credit card, Erin.
No, no, I won't give you my credit card. You're already spending too much of my money. That's why we're here, because everywhere we look, there's more and more money being spent and dedicated. And last night, since I'm a new Elk, and this is a wonderful facility that they have in Milwaukee, and we understand that you've put in a bid to buy the lodge, tear it down, and put in low-income housing. I think this is a criminal thing to even think about. And the agreement apparently just puts it on hold and really doesn't give any finalizations for anything and I think we need a lot more input about that and exactly what you're doing on that. I'd like a reply from that also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I don't have any more cards and we will move on to our presentations. And today, we are thrilled to have a truly outstanding presentation, why we have news media here that we don't usually have. And that is because we have a county employee that you may have read about in the newspaper in the last week. Joan Laberan is here with us today. She has worked for Clackamas County for 59 years. And that's just really hard to imagine in this day and age. So with that, I am going to turn this over to Ellen Crawford, who is here to explain a little bit more and talk. And I don't know what - we don't really have a plan. Are you both coming up here or certainly?
Which one's Joan?
And I see many of your colleagues are here in the audience today as well.
Thank you, Chair Leehan and fellow commissioners and county administration. I'm Ellen Crawford. I'm the Director of the Juvenile Department. And of course, this is Joan Laberan, a juvenile counselor with our department. And today, I'm here to ask for your public recognition of Joan Laberan, who is retiring July 16 after 59 years of service with Clackamas County. Joan began working for Clackamas County July 1, 1953. During that time, she has made significant contributions to hundreds of youth and families. She has participated on numerous boards, commissions, and committees, all serving the best interests of public safety. Her dedication and commitment to public service is extraordinary. Over these many decades, Joan has experienced numerous changes in public service and in the juvenile justice system. She embraces change with an optimistic attitude. She exemplifies a positive role model with all of our community partners. Joan has always demonstrated a high degree of professionalism in her relationships with the law enforcement community, the courts, and her coworkers. She takes great pride in representing Clackamas County and the work that we do for youth and families. Joan's contributions will obviously be missed, but I firmly believe the impacts that she's had on juvenile justice and public safety will remain for years to come. Therefore, today, I'm asking for your public recognition of Joan Laberan for her 59 years of service to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask if there are comments from any of the commissioners and then we will come down and just because we would like to have our picture taken with Joan on this momentous occasion. So, comments. Commissioner Bernard?
I've been here - well, first thing, you started before I was born, so. I've been here, you know, four years and I'm pretty amazed that, you know, this county has outstanding staff. And there's some reason why somebody stays here all those years. And I think a lot of it is because of your coworkers. I mean, you're welcome to tell me this, but your coworkers, the environment around this organization. And, you know, I imagine in all those years, it's changed substantially. And I understand, you know, you've worked all around the county all these years and, you know, youth, juveniles, it's a challenging issue, an issue that I don't know if I could do it. And I'm thankful that there are people like you that have dedicated their lives. You were probably - you were about 18 or 12 when you started, so. So, I mean, you were a juvenile yourself, really, and I'm sure that was very helpful to some of those kids who came to ask for help or who were made to ask for help. But as a county commissioner, as a resident of Clackamas County, appreciate your many, many years of service and will miss you at the recognition lunches. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, as someone who has served the community for so long, you've surely seen the ebb and flow of public support for the work of public servants. And I think that your fortitude in continuing to serve even when sometimes people don't say that that's a great course and sometimes they do say that's a great course, that is inspiration because serving in a hard time is a real gift to us and our community. And I would love to hear if you have any thoughts on how you came to serve for so long and what advice you'd give for others who are in public service now.
We were a very small county when I started. Judge Holman was the only circuit judge. Judge Hammond had been just appointed as the Second Circuit Judge. Believe it or not, the county worked Monday through Saturday noon. The courthouse was open on Saturday mornings for business. Justice Holman took me under his wing at that point and started teaching me about drawing legal forms and things like this, which we used in the juvenile department. And it's his start with me, I think, that has kept me in this so long. He's a wonderful gentleman, an excellent attorney, and a great teacher, although he'd like to tell you he's gruff. He is not. And then the people I've worked with have been outstanding. The directors of our department have all been outstanding. And I have never wanted to be a real leadership. I enjoy more working with the families themselves. I got my leadership through my work with my college sorority and holding a national office there and traveling the United States. And I'll tell you, I was always happy to get back to Clackamas County. So, as far as I'm concerned, this is a wonderful county. I've lived in it most of my life. We own property here. We enjoy living here. And I think that as a whole, the commissioners have been great. They've been nice to our department through all of the years, even when it was lean and there was no money, which we're now going back. there was no money, which we're now going back through again. But we've always managed to hang on. Years ago, we used to do a lot of joke playing on each other. Can't do that anymore now. Sorry about that. Because we had lots of fun. We had a rubber chicken that used to pass through the hands as somebody was having a real problem. You'd come in and there it would be hanging out of your file cabinet or laying across your desk. And that went on for years. And it just kind of kept the spirit of the whole department up. Two of us got into trouble once with the director when we were having quite a cut. And we had developed this drive-up situation where we had questions out there. And if this was what was bothering you or your child, you could punch a button and we could tell you how you could get help. That just about did Mr. Welch in. But it has been great working and I enjoyed it very much. But the time has come to move on.
Did you want to say something?
I just want to just say that as an employer for almost 28, 30 years in Clackamas, well, actually in Oregon, but that when you get, when you put a job application out there, you know, one of the things that I always looked at was their length of service at their previous employer. And it was always striking when you saw sometimes how many people would go from job to job, holding a hold of job for a few months. But, you know, I know that some of the great people that worked for me, that had a great length of service were special people. And I just want to say that 59 years, I mean, I'd hire you right away. So, I just want to say, thank you for your dedication and really, you know, somewhat as an employer, but more as a county commissioner, I just want to say thank you for your service. And that's, it is exemplary, unusual to have that length of service. Even half that time is outstanding. So, thank you very much for what you provided for Clackamas County and the citizens of Clackamas County and people that are, what were juveniles that are out there today as adults living a good life for your guidance and your service. So, thanks.
Can I?
Yes.
So, I just have to say, you know, sitting across from you, I am both inspired and in awe that you have dedicated your entire adult working life to making life better for troubled kids, which are a very challenging population for us. And so, I just thank you so much for your service. I am just curious what you're going to do with your time once you leave us. What are you going to be doing?
I have a husband who retired 20-some years ago. And he has an office in our house. And I can't find the desktop. So, that is the beginning.
Well, he's lucky to have you. And we are just, it'll be a big hole, I'm sure, for you not to be here. And I'm so sorry that I don't get the opportunity to serve with you, since I am fairly new here, so, but thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And I would just add that I know you've worked here through your early, your youth and middle age and now in your senior years. But I want to point out that you off, especially in the last 20 years or so of your working life, you have offered such an excellent role model for people about, not only about professional work and how you work, but about how people age and become, have so much to offer in their maturity. And I think a lot of times we forget about that and people retire in their 50s and we don't have the opportunity to work with people who are more senior and still extremely active and excellent contributors. And so, it's just, it's always good to have mentors like you in our midst. And with that, I would ask if you would like to introduce your colleagues or if your colleagues would like to stand up or be recognized or something. But I know you have a fan club sitting out here.
Well, I do know that people from the commission are here. And I've served on it since its beginning. So, that's why, probably.
So, maybe they could stand up at least and...
Aye.
And with that, then, we will come down and present you with a extremely modest token of our appreciation.
One, two, three. And another one. One, two, three. And can I have Ellen be in the picture too?
All our commissioners, they should proud up.
Sure, I'll get that.
We do begin a long class.
One, two, three. Okay. You need to scrunch in, maybe the...
You can be right in front of them.
Maybe you can get in. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
With that, we will move on to our public hearings. And we, the first item we have is the second reading of ordinance number 062012, amending the Clackamas County ambulance plan. And I believe we have, I have on here Cindy Becker and Larry McDaniel, or perhaps just Larry, from Health, Housing and Human Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Larry McDaniel, the EMS supervisor for Clackamas County. The Clackamas County Health, Housing and Human Services Department requests the Board conduct the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 06-2012, amending the ambulance service plan, county code chapter 10.01. At the direction of the Board of Commissioners, staff has prepared a proposed amendments to the county ambulance service plan that was adopted in 2005. Each element of the system has been addressed and considered as described in Oregon State statute and administrative rules. The plan must be adopted by the Board as a non-emergency ordinance and approved by the state of Oregon, their Public Health Division. Notice of interested parties was made by email February 8th, 2012. Proposals were received and addressed and considered by staff and the EMS council. The EMS council approved this plan as presented on May 31st, 2012. A study session was held on June 12th and the first reading took place on June 28th. We recommend the Board conduct the second reading and adoption of the ambulance service plan by title only. Any questions?
No. Okay.
No questions.
Any questions? Yes?
Any questions?
Questions? You want to have any questions? Then we will open the public hearing on this item. And I have four cards here. The first two I have are Wes Hall and Randy Lauer.
My name is Wes Hall. I'm a deputy with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. I just wanted to speak briefly in support of AMR. I've had the pleasure of working with them the past five years. One of the things, the two big things they offer us above and beyond normal ambulance service are the Reach and Treat teams and the water rescue. I current, before my current assignment in the city of Damascus, I was working the Mountain District for about the past year and a half for the Sheriff's Office. I responded to lots of accidents with the Reach and Treat team. They're always professional and have a high level of service for everybody involved. One other service that we are approaching, the Sheriff's Office is approaching AMR for right now. I'm also involved with the SWAT team. We're asking AMR to provide us with SWAT medics. We were in negotiations with a large fire department in our county. That fell through. So, our next best step is to go to our ambulance service provider, which is AMR, which makes sense. They already provide us with RAT and water rescue. The Sheriff's Office has a good history with AMR and we'd like to continue that. We are in preliminary talks with them to provide us with volunteer SWAT medics. It wouldn't cost the county a dime. And in fact, they've, so far, they do that for, in other parts of the country, namely Michigan and I believe in California as well, they provide SWAT teams with tactical medics. I will bring up one example of, back in February, I responded to a crash out in the National Forest area. There was no fire department to respond. It was only the Sheriff's Office and an AMR ambulance that responded to an injury crash that involved a motorhome. I arrived on scene and saw three deputies inside of a motorhome with one of the AMR paramedics. We had two patients at the time. Both of them ended up getting lifelighted. That's the level of service they provide us. Sometimes where there's no fire department available, I just ask that you consider that we continue for them to be our service provider. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my turn, I guess. Good morning. I'm Randy Lauer, AMR General Manager. I'm speaking about the ASA plan revision. I was, I participated in discussions leading to the revision you have before you. And during those discussions, said repeatedly that anything that, any changes that increase cost ought to be tied directly to initiatives that improve patient care. Unfortunately, that's not how it turned out. The revised plan changes response time boundaries, in particular adding all of Happy Valley and Oregon City into the urban response area. Currently, half, roughly half of each city lies within the suburban response area and those areas are indeed suburban in nature. The response time zone changes may seem innocuous, but we estimate that it will take two more ambulances to meet the shorter response times in those areas. One ambulance, 12 hours a day, costs $456,000. Two costs $900,000. Has a financial impact analysis been done regarding these changes? I think you would agree it's responsible governance to understand the cost of your actions. You should send the plan back to staff to complete that financial analysis. It takes over $4 million in gross charges to raise $900,000 of net revenue. That's because Medicare, Medicaid, and the uninsured account for 70% of the payer mix. They will not or cannot pay more. We collect about half of the billed amount from the remaining 30%. End result is that we collect only 21% of any new dollars billed. So, translate that to ambulance rates and they'll have to go up $240 per transport to pay for the changes in this plan, $240. Did you intend that or did Clackamas Fire lead you down this path blindfolded? It's also important to note that the early bid you've decided on will likely have a price component. A provider without intimate knowledge of what it takes to serve the county may very well propose to field fewer ambulances than are needed. If they propose fewer ambulances, like what happened in 2002 during the last bid, they can offer a price that is several hundred dollars less and essentially buy the contract. That will put the county, will set the county up for failure. You know, I don't know what Clackamas Fire has against us, but we hope that will change under the new leadership of Chief Charlton. We hope they'll become good partners and teammates like the other 10 fire departments in the county. According to Commissioner Bernard, a request from Clackamas Fire is the only reason you're putting the ambulance contract out for an early bid. The other 10 fire departments oppose that direction. Why is it that only Clackamas Fire District 1 matters to you? Is what Sandy and Boring and Hoodling want unimportant? Doesn't Estacada, Malawa, and Canby's opinions matter? Is Clackamas Fire more important than Twalton Valley, Lake Casuigo, and Gladstone? You're being led down a very dangerous path, one that will only add new cost without improving patient care, one iota. It's not too late to do the right thing. Send ASA plan back for fiscal impact analysis, pull a plug on this premature RFP, and let us get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two cards I have are Kyle Gorman and Charles Savoy.
Good morning. Charles Savoy, resident of Oak Grove and full-time paramedic with 30 years of experience in EMS. The ASA plan is the foundation upon which any ASA contract is built. As such, revision of the plan should not be done hastily. Revision of the plan has far-reaching consequences and may even require renegotiations with the current, of the current contract, which is in effect until April 30th, 2014, at the very least. Unless there is compelling necessity, there is no need to revise the plan sooner than about May of 2013. Where's, wherever there is ambiguity or assumed understanding in ordinance, there is an invitation to litigation. When considering enactment of any ordinance, it is incumbent upon Board to reduce the potential for litigation. The terms urban area and suburban area, et cetera, are used in this ordinance. The definition of each of these is stated as an area within an ASA which is designated as such on a map attached as Appendix A. While the map provides a visual description of the areas after they have been determined, the actual definitions of these are found in the body of the ordinance at 10.01050C2F. In this ordinance, the terms response zone and response time area begin to be used interchangeably to refer to urban, suburban, rural, and frontier areas. It is assumed that this is understood, that these terms are interchangeable, but it seems prudent to clarify this in the definitions or at some point in the body of the ordinance. The consistent use of terms such as urban response time area would also provide more clarity. The current ASA contract contains response time regions, speaking of the contract now, in addition to areas or zones. These are not mentioned in the ASA plan. If the county intends to continue the use of regions, now would be a good time to include language that addresses regions. The language of 10.01050C2F also contains the ambiguous and unrestricted language may be appropriate in reference to the criteria for how the Board should determine the, which areas of the county should be included in each of these. Such language creates the potential for arbitrary inclusion or exclusion of a given population based on political pressures rather than actual population densities. This language should be revisited before enactment of the proposed revision of the ordinance that is being considered at this time. Revisions of the ASA plan potentially cause financial impact on ambulance services operators provide, operations. Therefore, I ask that in the interest of providing the effect, for the effective and efficient provision of emergency medical services, as is in the plan, the Board consider inclusion in this ordinance of the provision that revisions of the plan be limited to no more than once every five years unless the Board is compelled to act sooner to prevent public harm or to comply with state or federal law. I respectfully request that the proposed ordinance be sent back to the EMS council for reconsideration before a vote by the Commissioners to enact this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gorman?
No problem. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kyle Gorman. I'm the executive officer for Clackamas County Fire District Number 1. And before I start, I would just like to say that 59 years of service in any occupation is totally... I'm the executive officer for Clackamas County Fire District Number 1. And before I start, I would just like to say that 59 years of service in any occupation is totally awesome, and I do not know where your county employee found the energy to come to work every day for 59 years, but I am awed by, by that accomplishment. In my role for Clackamas Fire, I'm responsible for, among other things, all of the medical programs for the fire district. And I think it's important to note that more than 50% of all emergencies in Clackamas County take place within the geopolitical boundaries of Clackamas Fire District Number 1. So we have a very significant stake in this process. Clackamas Fire has been an active participant in the ambulance service plan development and have been, and have many other EMS system stakeholders. We continue to look forward to work closely with EMS staff and others as the county moves forward to craft an RFP that meets the needs of the system. The fire district generally supports the ambulance service plan and supports your adopting it today. It's not perfect, but it contains the provisions necessary to ensure that it complies with state statute and that generally improvements are made in the system. We think that there are a number of improvements that are possible in the context of an RFP that have not been included in the ASA Plan. The plan allows the county to move forward with an RFP, and as you know from our letter back in August of 2011, we support that. As the county is developing your RFP, we ask that you support the Clackamas County Business Alliance's recommendations to establish a blackout provision and other blackout provisions during the term of the RFP process. We are concerned that blackout provisions should be expanded to include local agencies as well. We are concerned that we will be under pressure from local potential bidders and other potential bidders to, to support or advocate on behalf of those bidders, and we don't want to be in that position. We think it should be a clean, open process. As such, we would ask that as you proceed with the RFP, please expand the blackout provisions to include local agencies as well as, as just the county. To be clear, we don't wish to prevent a provider from coming to us to ask what system improvements need to be made. We only ask that they be prevented from seeking advocacy from us or others. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's all the cards I have on this item. So, Commissioner Bernard.
I, I just had a question of Larry. The Board that reviewed the, the plan, what was the vote?
It was nine to zero in favor of.
So it was unanimous to move forward on the ASA, on this plan? Okay, thank you.
I had a, so, I had a, that was one of my questions as well, but further, the agencies or representatives around the EMS Council, they represent who? Could you maybe, from recollection, I know, if I recall right, there was, I think, Canby Fire, I believe, and Malala?
Canby Fire is represented because the Chair is, represents a government agency that provides ambulance service. The Chief of Malala is on the council as a representative appointed by the Fire Defense Board. There's an EMS medical supervisor for an agency, that's Dr. Warden for Clackamas Fire. There's an ALS provider from Lake Oswego, Steve Dehart. A BLS provider from Gladstone. There's a physician from Kaiser. There's a citizen who lives in the Malala, Malino area. I think, there's a total of 11. There's a county representative who's currently Nancy Bush, and a PSAP representative who is currently Ryan DeJardine.
And so Clackamas Fire does, I didn't hear them, is really having an official seat on the Board?
They do not currently have a seat on that Board, although they participated in this process extensively.
Okay. And if I understood correctly, when I was briefed on this, that any shortcomings of the plan or any modifications of the plan could be part of an RFP process and could be incorporated, you know, in a, in a final contract?
Correct. The, the plan, you know, is, is a somewhat simplified tool. It's, it's sort of not meant to replace the RFP or a contract. Those are very detailed.
Okay, thank you.
Can I?
Yes.
So, so my concern continues to be, and we talked about this when you brought this forward to us at the, at our work-study session, about, I understand that this is a framework that helps to guide the development of, of an RFP, and it seems to me that the EMS councils should have a role in developing that RFP, especially in detailing out performance standards. And I know that there are some of those listed in this ASA Plan, but I'm a little bit, just, I'm a little concerned about the timeframe and the ability for the EMS Council to influence in some meaningful way the development of the performance standards in the RFP. And so I'm not sure where we're at in that process, or can you, can you just speak to that a little bit? I brought this up the last time when we talked, when you presented this at the work-study session.
Well, our current place in that process is still drafting kind of the working part of the RFP. So that's not been completed yet. And when it is, then that document can be reviewed.
By the EMS Council?
Probably also by the Commissioners, because it's going to be the central part of the RFP.
Right.
Question?
I'd like to validate what Commissioner Damon said. I think that that's important. Now, this is a bunch of experts from a wide array of perspectives, and I think it would be useful to have their input as we prepare the RFP. And I, I think that you have that in mind, but I want to be clear that I agree with Commissioner Damon on that.
Yeah, and so, and all along, I know that we've talked about, we have a particular, you know, some milestones that we're trying to meet in a timeframe that we're trying to adhere to, and I just, I worry that the RFP won't be as strong as it could be if we, if we adhere to those timeframes at the expense of availing ourselves of the expertise of the EMS Council, who, you know, worked diligently to help put together this ASA. And so that's, so I, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm watching that, you know? I just want to make sure that we can, I'm watching you, I, I just want to make sure that we're get, we're benefiting from the EMS Council. And when I hear testimony, like we've heard at multiple meetings, business meetings and study sessions about, you know, just folks concerned about the timeframe, I just want to make sure that we're not shortchanging ourselves and having the strongest RFP possible.
Okay. So, just also to clarify the difference between this and the RFP, or, or what we can do, so if the issues that were, some of the issues that were raised today, like the, the upward pressure on, on, on cost of service, if the, the, the boundaries that were drawn, if, if it's determined later that those suburban and urban designations are inappropriate, can we, what, what's the remedy? Can that be addressed in the RFP if we decide that that's, that was an unrealistic, on the financial side, unrealistic expectation? Or, or is it addressed at the contract stage, or, or what, as more information becomes available on topics like this or perhaps others?
Yeah, the, the mechanism for changing those response zones will come back to the Board.
It, it will come back as?
It's a, it's a part of the plan, so to change that, you just have to amend that part.
Which we could do at any time, or?
Correct.
Or clarify it in the RFP?
I, I think you'd need to clarify it in the plan itself.
In the plan. So if we were to, if we wanted to change that, if we decided next, next week or next month that, that on further reflection, this, the, the boundaries were causing too much upward pressure on cost, that we would come back to, we would need to call back this before the RFP went out, or after the RFP? I mean, that, then, then you couldn't, you, you see my issue here, because the, because people would be responding in the RFP to, to those cost implications.
That's correct, and, and that's.
So one would want this, issues that had cost impacts settled before the RFP process. I'm, I'm just trying to think.
Yeah, it's a good question. It's kind of a legal question, so I'll give you a legal answer. Dave Anderson from the County Council's office. It is the plan that sets the boundaries of the response time zones. So if you want to change the response time zones, you have to amend the plan. And that takes, it's an ordinance amendment, it takes two readings, a non-emergency ordinance, it's effective 90 days afterwards, and it has to go to the State Health Division for plan review, which is, is generally pretty cursory, but it's a formality that has to be observed.
Okay, and, and so then, the, my follow-up is, that, because since that could result in significant delay, one should think, did, did the EMS Council consider the cost implications of, of these parameters?
Not directly, no.
Not directly?
No.
It would just seem that, if I remember from the briefing discussion, that, you know, I think Happy Valley was one area that was mentioned that was part of that. You know, Happy Valley's expanded and urbanized considerably, and what's, was once rural is now suburban. So it would seem that now it's being included, and, and I, is, that's pretty much the rationale for the effective change in that area?
Yes, Happy Valley is, even under the old plan, they met the two requirements that have been established for an urban area. They have a city population of greater than 9,000, and they have an urban density greater than 2,000 per square mile throughout their city. And the same was true, Oregon City is really just a little annexed boundaries that had been suburban and would now be considered urban. My understanding is that wouldn't take place under the current contract, it would be in the new contract under the RFP. So multiple proposers could tell us how this would affect costs.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, so in the RFP process, it would be determined by the people who bid that, you know, looking at the costs, it's so much higher in those areas versus other areas, and these changes would have an impact on that, we would see in the RFP process, I would think. Because one bidder may think those costs are extremely high and another bidder may not. Or the way they respond or, or, you know, position their ambulances may determine whether those costs are higher or lower, but that would be determined in the RFP, I would think. Correct? I mean, they're going to bid a price, and that price is going to, you know, either increase or decrease depending upon how they respond to those changes in the, in the plan. Correct?
Correct.
Third question.
Can I, I just, this information about the EMS Council not weighing in about the financial implications is concerning, and, and it just further underscores, I think, the role of the EMS Council in providing that, you know, that broader set of eyes on the, on the ASA Plan, if it is going to be the, the, the framework for the development of the RFP, and particularly if we're considering moving into an evergreen contract, which I think, which I support, and I think makes a lot of sense, I think we really need to be very, do our due diligence, be very careful, and avail ourselves of as many experts as possible in developing that RFP, and so that we're not, I don't want to be in a situation where the bidders are telling me what the costs are going to be. I'd rather be in a situation that we're more informed moving forward about what the, you know, the trade-offs are associated with the, the ASA Plan. And I'm probably not saying this very well, because you're all looking at me like, what is she talking about? But I just, it just continues to underscore the need, I think, for the EMS Council to be involved in developing the RFP, because I would like to benefit from their expertise about the ramifications of cost, so that we have a better understanding of that in writing the RFP, so that people can be more responsive. Is that more clear? Okay.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, I just want to ask, now, you know, we approve this plan, it becomes, let's say, official today, I mean, does that actually have a monetary effect that was stated here today, or is that literally in the next zone? So potentially it could. It's not that it will happen by virtue of this plan alone. For example, if we, on the current contract with AMR, are they, are they now have to meet the requirements of this ASA?
No, the new requirements, excuse me, would not take effect until the new contract.
Okay, so there is no impact at this point? So that opportunity to vet that and would be in the future? Okay.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions, then I would ask for a motion to read this ordinance by title only.
Madam Chair, I move we read ordinance number 06-2012, amending Chapter 10.01, ambulance service plan of the Clackamas County Code by title only.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Lininger that we read the ordinance, amending Chapter 10.01 by title only. Is there any other discussion? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that, it passes 5-0, which is unanimous, and I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is ordinance number 06-2012, an ordinance amending Chapter 10.01, ambulance service plan of the Clackamas County Code.
With that, I would ask for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt ordinance number 06-2012, amending Chapter 10.01, ambulance service plan for Clackamas County Code, of the Clackamas County Code.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Savis that we adopt ordinance number 062012, amending Chapter 10.01 of the ambulance service plan of the Clackamas County Code. Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes 5-0 and is unanimous. And, anything else we need to do on this one?
Nope.
No. That, then that brings us to the next item under public hearings is the first reading of ordinance, of, an ordinance amending Chapter 7.03, road use of the Clackamas County Code. And we have Scott Sedaris from County Council and Rick Nyes, yes, of the Department of Transportation and Development.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Scott Sedaris. I'm one of your attorneys. I come before you this morning to respectfully request that this morning we read for the first time by title only an ordinance amending Chapter 7.03, our road use ordinance. Commissioners, all parts of our county code are important, but in our view, Chapter 7.03 is especially significant because this is an important tool that we use to make our roads safe for the traveling public. With your permission, I have with me my colleague, Mr. Rick Nyes, an engineer from the Department of Transportation and Development, who's available to give a brief explanation of the reason for the proposed changes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rick Nyes. I'm a senior traffic engineer with the Department of Transportation and Development. And largely the changes before you today are basically removing the technical standards from the county code, and concurrently, we're planning an update to the Clackamas County roadway standards. So it's basically moving them from one place to another place. And the reason for that is, the county code currently is filled with out-of-date technical standards. So if we put them in the, the Clackamas County roadway standards, we have a greater ability to keep them updated. Don't have much more to add. Available for, for questions if you have any.
Questions of Mr. Nyes? Apparently no one has a question about that.
I'm just going to ask if there's anything unique that maybe contractors or the public ought to know that's unique about the new standards, or was there anything added besides just really the compliance with the new, the new language and the new laws?
I would say there's, there's probably three things that were added that. I would say there's probably three things that were added that may be of interest, the first being how we address portable storage containers, pods or SAMs. In our view, those devices, those are hazards if they're placed in the roadway, so the update to the county code proposes to not allow those to sit on, within a county roadway. The second, the second thing added, let's see, is basically modifying our standards for sidewalk, vertical displacement in sidewalk, so that it meets the current American Disabilities Act standards. And the last, the last thing we're adding is some language regarding our county memorial sign policy, basically telling, describing cases in which we would not, or when we might remove memorials from fatal crashes along the roadway.
Thank you.
This is also a public hearing, I will open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to speak to this item, because I do not have any cards.
That's just where these are.
Okay?
Les Poole, thanks for the opportunity to speak again. Obviously, I don't study all the road codes, but as someone that's got a lot of land use experience, and dealt with access and safety issues, it's good to hear that there is some changes being made in making the sidewalks more ADA accessible. The cost for that is prohibitive in some places, and in these tough times, I know it's difficult to negotiate, you know, how do we, how do we make the roadways better utilized at a cost that the county can absorb, and not plan things and try and do the right things, and then not have the money, visically where things are tough. There's an issue that I was going to bring up sometime in the future, and the gentleman just touched on it, and that is, I've thought for a long time it would be a good idea to propose some very simple standards for roadside memorials, if, you know, if somehow, because you're getting into such an emotional issue for anyone that's lost a family member. I met a lady last night at the Elks Club, and she's raising her granddaughter. There's no memorial where the accident took place, where her daughter was eight and a half months pregnant, died in a car accident, and the baby survived. If you've ever had anyone in your family die in one of these tragedies, it just tears people apart to put up a memorial and then have it torn down, or be told it's not up to a code. If there was some simple way to put a standard, you know, a white stake, so to speak, with hooks on it, that people could hang flowers on, something that, for those that chose, could have the option of making a discreet little cross on it, it would really help. It's so ironic, but when everyone leaves here, I hope you take a look at the TriMet Bus Shelter, right out here in front on Beaver Creek Road where that young lady was tragically hit. There's a memorial there, and I wouldn't want to be the code enforcement person that comes along and says, well, that's got to go. So I don't want to get too far off the main subject, but it's certainly something that could be addressed in the future. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bernard?
So clarification, we do allowed roadside memorials, we just have, we specifically identify when we don't, or how long they can stay, correct?
Right now, we're working on a formal memorial sign policy, where a person or family that was involved in a situation like this could purchase or adopt the road, purchase a sign, or adopt the road, and have a sign installed. And we're really not interested in, you know, going out and tearing down these memorials, it's more if it becomes a maintenance issue or a safety issue, that's when we might consider pulling down the memorials, that I would say it's going to, it would be very rare if ever.
Yeah. We had a similar situation in Milwaukee while I was mayor, somebody was actually killed on Railroad Avenue, and a memorial went up, and trees got planted at the corner, and we couldn't allow that, it made visibility very challenging on the corner. So whatever, what eventually happened is that she put a plaque in the ground that did not go above the surface level, and that was satisfactory, with the permission of the property owner, by the way. But also, we offered other alternatives, which tree memorial, a tree, we offered at the time to purchase trees, or she could purchase trees and put them on sites, and then put a plaque on those. There are lots of opportunities, and we're not not allowing it, and we're not taking them down unless it's actually a hazard. So I think this is great, because it takes a lot of stuff and puts it back where it belongs, which is in the manual.
And just to further clarify, we did discuss at a study session about if we wanted to put timeframes on, you know, how long a memorial could be there, and we decided not to, not to do that, because that does get at kind of what you're talking about, which is, well then we're regulating, you know, how long it takes for folks to, I mean, that's not, that's not okay. So we didn't, we didn't include that, and it really is more about, you know, at the point that people continue to bring flowers and teddy bears, and those, and they spill out onto the sidewalk and make it difficult for passage, or become, you know, an eyesore, and people come, you know, folks complain, maybe neighboring businesses, then if you read the code, there's a provision for us to contact, or really try to contact, the family or the person responsible, talk with them about some of these other options, and so that we can move forward in a way that is respectful of them and also in the public good. So we did try to err on the side of compassion.
With that, I don't have anyone else here to testify on this item, so I will close the public hearing, and ask for a motion to read this ordinance by title only.
Chair Lee, I move we read the ordinance amending Chapter 7.03, road use of the Clackamas County Code by title only.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lininger and seconded by Commissioner Savis, that we read the ordinance amending Chapter 7.03 by title only. All, I'm going to get ahead of myself. Any discussion? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 5-0 and is unanimous, and with that, I will ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance number 07-2012, and ordinance amending Chapter 7.03, road use of the Clackamas County Code.
Oh yeah, yeah. Okay, so with that, it has a number, and we, it's now my job to announce that there will be a second reading on this item on July 26th, at the regularly scheduled 10:00 a.m. business meeting. So it is not decided for certain yet. And then we have another first reading, this time of an ordinance amending Chapter 5.01, which is animal services of the Clackamas County Code. And we have Scott Seiko here, and Diana Hallmark from Dog Services.
Good morning, members of the board, my name is Scott Seiko, I'm from the Office of County Council, and as you pointed out, with me here is Diana Hallmark from Dog Services. We're here this morning to recommend adoption of certain amendments to Chapter 5.01 of the Clackamas County Code, which regulates animal services within the county. Recent review by staff of Chapter 5.01 has led to the conclusion that several changes are necessary to the code in order to ensure continued efficiency in the regulation of dogs in Clackamas County. These changes were discussed with the board previously at a study session on April 24th of this year. In summary, the changes that are proposed include a number of substantive changes. The primary substantive changes in the ordinance include adding a requirement that the individual obtaining a dog license be at least 18 years of age. It would repeal limitations on the maximum number of dogs that can be owned, and thereby allowing dog services staff to focus primarily on minimum care standards within people's houses, rather than just a set number. The proposed ordinance would add a requirement that all dogs within the county are licensed by the time that they're six months of age, or by the time that they, dogs get their permanent canine teeth, whichever event occurs first. And the ordinance would require that veterinarians within the county report to Clackamas County Dog Services when dogs receive rabies vaccinations. There are, as I had alluded to, several other additional changes that are proposed in the code, those are predominantly administrative changes and are less substantive. There are some anticipated, minor anticipated fiscal impacts from these changes, they are largely related to the requirement that veterinarians report rabies vaccinations to Dog Services, and the impacts from this reporting are actually expected to be positive for Dog Services, because there would be increased number of dog licenses issued, and therefore additional revenue for the department. With the foregoing summary of the changes, proposed changes in mind, staff respectfully recommends that the board begin the adoption of the ordinance by reading the ordinance by title only, and by scheduling a second reading for July 26th to complete the adoption of the ordinance. And of course, Ms. Hallmark and myself are both available to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, any questions? I know we went over this quite a bit in study session.
Yeah, I just want to just make my comment, which I've kind of raised before, and I know this is really not code enforcement, per se, but there is an enforcement element to some of this stuff, and I know that over the last couple of years, that dog barking annoyance, as is pointed out in this, in this document here before me, that is being repealed, so really, they're number five, repeal language relating to penalties for continuous annoyance. I know that in the, in the process, that we gathered a number of our constituents around and talked about code enforcement in general, not just dogs, that, you know, that was something that really wasn't discussed, and yet that is somewhat being removed, and we accommodated a lot of the concerns of the public for enhanced code enforcement in other areas, and maybe less in some, and this was really not one of them. And I just, so, I do realize that it's not easy, and it's a difficult thing to pursue this path, but, excuse me, I don't, I just, I can't support this today, because I really don't believe, this is really headed down a direction where annoyance is something that is frankly annoys people, and we got to move towards that somehow, and I will, I will continue to advocate for, for pursuing dog barking issues and other annoyances that dogs create. I am a dog lover, I've had a dog in my past, I will have a dog in my future, but frankly, I think that dogs that bark incessantly, there needs to be some kind of means and responsibility for us, the county, to step forward, and not, not retreat.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I'm going to be supporting this, even though this is not really in there, you know, sustainable, sustainability of this program, sustainability of code enforcement means that you have to identify things that you can actually resolve, that your investments in time to resolve life safety issues can be addressed in a sustainable way. Dog barking is not one of those. Responding to dog barking, which I have attempted to a number of times, resolve people's issues with dog barking, is a very expensive way to resolve the problem. And I'm going to give a somewhat slightly different example. When I first became, was elected mayor, up on Happy Valley's mountain, there was a sign that had been there 10 years, that said apartments for rent. And one of the neighbors called me, and, you know, they said, you guys need to enforce your sign ordinance. So I decided, I'm going to go up there, I didn't even have my card yet, and I went up and I knocked, I went to the apartment complex, it's a big one, and I said, you know, over the years, somebody has been complaining about this, actually, somebody pretended they were a county commissioner, and went there and told them to take their sign down, turns out they weren't. So I said, I hope you appreciate that, I don't have any cards yet, but I was just elected county commissioner, would you please take down the sign? You know, it doesn't meet ordinance, we do allow temporary signage. What did they do? They took it down. It's still not up, and the neighbors who had been complaining about it for 10 years, all they had to do was ask, and that's what I did, and, and, you know, it was resolved. And so communicating with your neighbors, you know, it's not just you that's being by the dog bark, it's other neighbors. So your neighbors need to get together and try to resolve the problem together. And a lot of that has to do with building relationships in your neighbor, with your neighbors in your neighborhood. So that, I think, is very important. I did try to resolve one gentleman who had complained for, my guess is, a decade. He told me he'd been complaining for about seven, eight, 10 years, about somebody's dog barking, and so I went to that neighborhood, and went to all the, there were a bunch of garage sales that day, and sat down and talked to the neighbors, and I said, so, do you guys have a problem with dog barking? Oh yeah, we hear it every once in a while, and, but no, it's not a big problem with, with the neighbors. So, and so I really tried to resolve this problem, was, but one of the biggest problems is, you know, a dog barks, how do you identify which dog that was, or what yard that was, or whether it really is a nuisance, or the guy just doesn't like the neighbor, so he complains about the dog. So, you know, I think we, it's, it's an investment that can't be made, and it is, there is an opportunity in the court system to resolve this issue, but I don't think it's something that we should be sending staff out, valuable staff, and then if you take the dog, then the price really goes up, on what it costs to take the dog through the long court process, and then actually keep the dog for many months, until it's resolved. So I'm going to be supporting this, and I appreciate the hard work put into this, and the hard work that the county's been putting into all of its evaluation of code and ordinance amendments, that, you know, will clean it up and make it easier for the citizen to determine what needs to be done, or how they can adhere to the code. So thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, the only, I just want to respond, commit a little bit to Commissioner Bernard, I don't, I do realize there are situations out there where there's a number of dogs, and there may be some cases where it's very difficult to identify which dog might be barking. I can just tell you that, you know, being very involved in my neighborhood, and being very involved in the county and knocking on doors, that I have yet to meet anyone that asked, let's stop enforcing dog barking ordinances. It's actually quite the opposite, and it's quite evident, and I've literally had several cases where the dog that they're complaining about, when I'm at their door, I can see the dog, and it's not multiple dogs, it's literally one dog. So when it's incessant, and it continues over and over and over, I mean, you know, it's not as though we're asking that, you know, dogs are not allowed to bark, because obviously that's why people get them, when they're alarmed or they're in fear, it's that incessant, constant barking that destroys the quality of life, and I think that Clackamas County is a wonderful, beautiful place, this is no reflection on staff, but, you know, there are, there are situations out there where it's very, very annoying, and we've had some very, at our Commissioner's Roundtable meetings, we have had some very passionate constituents out there that have tried that course that you just suggested, and have been unsuccessful, and tried to move and can't sell their property, because anytime anyone comes to look at their home, all they hear is that dog that barks constantly.
Madam Chair, if I may just respond briefly, I just want to make one point of clarification, I'm asking number five on the staff report, the actual violation for continuous annoyance, for a dog continuously barking... The actual violation for continuance annoyance, for, for a dog continuously barking, was repealed in 2010. The change that's being made today is merely an administrative change because there was inadvertently a piece of that that was left in the ordinance. So that decision was, was made at some point in the past. Of course, if the board wishes to revisit that, that's something that staff will consider.
And I, I understand that. I understood that at the work session. So I understand we're never, we're not today, as of today, you're correct, and, but it is a point, and it just is more, this is a reminder of kind of going down the wrong path, at least on this particular piece. That's the one element that just makes it even more further difficult to re-implement in the future, which I'm, I will be advocating for.
This, that was questions, technically questions, it had some discussion to it. But this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak on changes to the code in dog services. Seeing no one, I will close the public.
Somebody in the back.
Oh.
My name's Carla Pletka from Unincorporated Milwaukee. Been here before on record. I just had a question. Don't, you can't get a dog license unless a dog has had its rabies shots. Is that correct? Or is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if you run through this, I guess I just hate to see the burden put on our veterinarians because if a dog has bitten, I mean, this really is only a concern if a dog has bitten somebody, correct? But you have to trace back to see if it's had its rabies shots, or is it if it bites other animals? I mean, I, if a dog, if somebody cares about their dog, it's going to have tags, and somebody will find the dog or come and get it and say it's been involved in a biting incident. And so you're going to have that information to go back to the owner if the owner isn't So that information should be readily available on the dog. Now, if somebody doesn't care about their dog, that dog is not going to have any traceability anyway. Whether a veterinarian has ever given shots to the dog, if people don't keep the tags on the dog, there's going to be no way unless that dog has a chip to relate it back to anywhere unless somebody actually comes and claims a dog if you pick it up, if it's bitten somebody. So I don't see, if you have all these veterinarians putting information into the county, I mean, it sounds good, but is it really going to be a good solution? Because either the dog is going to already have a tag or a chip, or it's not going to have anything. And unless somebody comes and claims the dog, you're kind of out of luck anyway. How are you going to identify that rabies information to a dog that has no tag on it? And if the dog has a tag, you're going to assume that it's had its shots.
Part of the value of having the rabies vaccinations reported is that it does enable us to get the, help the owners become more motivated to actually license their dog, which consequently then allows the time of stay at the shelter to reduce, biting incidents to be resolved more quickly. In our case, for instance, a dog with a current rabies in a home environment where they can meet their criteria of a rabies observation are allowed to do so at home versus having to be, conduct the rabies observation at the shelter. So, so it reduces the financial burden to the owner itself.
But if you know where the home of the dog is, then you're going to contact those people, and they should be able to come up with proof that the dog has had recent rabies vaccinations. So, I mean, it just seems.
Yeah. And, and we asked a lot of these same questions when we were, went over it in more detail at study session and, and, but our, part of the evidence is that, and certainly there are ways that people can get out of, irresponsible pet owners will always exist. And, and there's only so much we can do, but the evidence was that in, in counties or dog services that did have this policy in place, compliance improved, increased. And, and that's our goal is to get, you know, end up with the highest percentage we can get. We know we're never getting to 100% that are vaccinated and licensed.
Well, he stated that the goal was to increase revenue. That was the goal.
Well, well, to, to, it, it's to operate as efficiently as we can and reduce time, time stays in the shelter and all of those things, so that there's the efficiency piece of it. And then there's also increasing compliance and, and, but, I mean, we asked the same questions. Would people, wouldn't they, would be less likely to license or more likely? And, and fortunately, we're not the first county to go down this path, and, and the track record is pretty good where they, where they have done this. So.
I'm all for dogs being, you know, taken care of their owners. I just don't want to see fees increase and have extra loads put on our veterinarians.
Yeah.
I like my bet. Anyway.
Oh, we appreciate, appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I think the response was is that this did not, did not have a negative monetary impact, but that there would be increased revenue as a result. I don't think it was a goal, though.
Okay, well.
I, I, I don't think I heard it as much.
It's another cost, so.
Okay, thank you. With that, I don't have anyone else signed up, so we will close the public hearing. And this is before us for first reading, and I will ask for a motion to approve, not approve, to read this ordinance by title only.
Chair Leehan, I move we read the ordinance amending chapter 5.01, Animal Services of the Clackamas County Code by Title Only.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Damon and seconded by Commissioner Bernard that we read the ordinance amending chapter 5.01, Animal Services of the Clackamas County Code by Title Only. Is there any further discussion, Commissioner Lineiger?
You know, I, I think Commissioner Savas made a good point. In the last two years, we've actually heard increasing amounts of information about people who are worried about the quality of life being affected by barking dogs. And granted, you know, as we have increased costs and flat to reducing revenue, we have to make some adjustments in terms of things that we spend money on. But a core role of the county commissioners is to protect the quality of life for people who are, just living their lives in the county, who don't necessarily need an intensive law enforcement or mental health or physical health intervention, but just want to live their life in a reasonably peaceful way. And at our first night meeting, we heard some very impassioned testimony by some residents who are very concerned about dogs that were scary and dangerous and perhaps being managed poorly by their owners, but causing a real hazard to the community from a quality of life and perhaps even safety standpoint. So while I absolutely support cleaning up the code, and I know that that's what's happening, I think there are a lot of really laudable provisions in this that we've been talking about, I'm going to go with Commissioner Savas and oppose this, this first reading. It's kind of an odd mechanism, but, but I want to, in doing so, I'm trying to send the signal that I think we actually need to revisit the dog barking issue. I think we need to make sure that we are focused sufficiently on, on protecting the quality of life of people going through their day. And so I, I'm actually going to oppose this.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I'll go ahead and weigh in. We, we had quite a lot of conversation about this at our work-study session when this was first presented about different options about moving forward around the, the dog barking. And I wasn't present as a commissioner in February 10, whenever it was, in 2010, when this was initially taken out. So I'm not exactly sure all the conversation that ensued as a part of that. I do share Commissioner Savas and Commissioner Lineiger's concerns about our lack of enforcement around barking dogs. I also am sensitive to the fact that there is a cost associated with that. And, and I'm not sure that, you know, if, if I were to oppose this today, if that somehow sets in motion, increases your ability to address the issue of enforcing dog barking in the county. So Diana, if, if I can indulge you, if you can just speak just a little bit about the costs associated with enforcement of barking dogs and maybe give us a little bit of information about why it was taken out in 2010, so we have that context, that would help me.
Currently, Dog Services has two field officers. And in '04, I believe the Board of County Commissioners established a priority for responses that allowed us to try to respond to those things that were of the highest order first with the two officers. Barking dogs or continuous annoyance, while it absolutely is a neighborhood issue, and we are fully aware of that, it did not rise to the level of a public safety issue. And with only two officers available to respond to complaints in the community and 1,800 square miles to cover, they are currently only able to respond to those items that are typically considered public safety. Injured animals, dangerous dogs, aggressive dogs at large, menacing kinds of situations. In responding to barking dogs, the challenge with that, of course, as Commissioner Bernard found, in many urban environments, it's difficult to determine exactly which dog is barking. And it is difficult to work through the process because it is, it takes an extensive amount of time to, to try to intercept the behavior patterns. Again, with only two officers, we had, we, we are making choices every day, as is the county, about what we respond to. And so since 2004, our responses have been mostly directed to those things that are considered public safety. We do continue to, when we receive calls about barking dogs, we do continue to send to the dog owner a brochure that lets them know that the barking, that they have a neighbor that's sensitive to that. We do also continue to give them the information so they can refer to dispute resolution and utilize the county mediation system to try to help neighbors speak to each other about how to resolve the barking dog. That's, that's how we have tried to maintain some level of response, but still maintain our ability to respond primarily to public safety issues.
Yep. And I know, you know, when I worked for many years as a community mediator, barking dogs were a continual complaint that would come before us. And it's, it is very complicated in terms of how you resolve it, but it is a quality of life issue, to be sure. So what I, I support this ordinance moving forward. I also support us continuing to work more closely about how we can provide higher quality, more in-depth information for dog owners. We had talked about potentially even, you know, a little video with some more links and resources, because it's not, you know, part of it is communication with your neighbor, part of it is training of your dog. You know, I can't tell you the number of times where I've called the neighbor who owns the dog and says, when I say your neighbor is concerned about your dog barking, and they say, yes, I am too, and I don't know how to make it stop. And so there's a lot, I think, that we can do to provide more information that way. If, you know, I, I am interested to work with you on this, and I said that in the work-study session, I think that because it does continue to come up. And the other piece I just want to say is, if we do in the future decide to enforce this, there is a cost associated with that. And I think that we would need to explore what we would do in terms of increased revenue for licensing or whatever in order to cover those costs. And I think we need to be really clear with the public that there is a cost, and we just heard from someone about, you know, concerns with increased costs to, you know, to vets for reporting, you know, everybody's sensitive to fees and licenses going up. But we, so that's part of the conversation, or the trade-offs associated with enforcement and the costs that go along with that, so.
I, I guess I will also weigh in on this. It's to not, not to belabor, spend a half an hour on, on dog codes. But I, I agree that it's extremely annoying to have barking dogs in the neighborhood. I don't think there are any of us who live in urban or suburban areas, and even many in rural areas who have not experienced these issues from time to time. But, but particularly in this time of constrained resources, I think we have to limit our, the enforcement part of what we do to things that are abusive animals or dangerous animals to the community. And, and the annoying piece, we should approach in the ways that you're describing. I will say, for one thing, barking dogs is annoying, but there are a lot of other things that are annoying in a neighborhood. And cats are one of them. I, I have more trouble in my house and neighborhood with cats. And, but, but there is, and I spend a lot of time chasing cats away from bird feeders or from my chickens. And, but there is no way I would propose that we have a cat ordinance or have some cat enforcement for trespassing cats. I, I know they're extremely annoying, but, but there's a limit to government's role on, on things like this that are annoying, that we need to work out at the neighborhood level, at the neighbor-to-neighbor level. And, I mean, yeah, and cats are only one of them. Can I tell you about it?
Love cats.
Not that I don't love cats. Can I tell you what it's like to be next to a house that has an above-ground pool in the summertime?
Chair Leehan, if I may, the last two readings you've had in front of you are as a result of our Code Update Committee. And one of the things that the Code Update Committee currently is reviewing as well is including a barking dog provision, which is allowed for in state law in the noise ordinance itself. So this isn't the only mechanism within the county code where we could review and monitor and enforce against barking dogs. Some of the troubling aspects are, the state law says it's prolonged and continuous terminology like that. So it still is in the pipeline, so to speak. And you might see it a couple of months from now, but probably not in the Animal Services section of the code.
Yeah, yeah.
In addition, you know, Happy Valley was here a couple of weeks ago. They were taking over code enforcement in their county, in their city. And Milwaukee does its own. So in, in, in some of those cities, there's a code that would involve barking dogs that wouldn't have anything to do with, with our enforcement, but would have to do with their code enforcement. So that, that's something that a lot of communities can make their own decision on. When it's, as far as unincorporate Clackamas County, it's 1,900 square miles, by the way. You know, sending somebody out to the mountains because of a barking dog and then the person brings it in the house, how are you going to prove the dog's barking? I mean, that's a very expensive thing when there may be something greater of concern to the citizens, life safety issues out there, so.
And I will, I want to clarify here that this is a motion today not to approve this, but a motion to read the ordinance by title only, because if we did not pass this, we would have to read this whole entire ordinance, and that would take most of a day, I should think. So that's, that would be a scary proposition. So with that, it has been moved and seconded that we read this by title only. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Phew.
That's to save Mary from reading the entire ordinance.
Scared me there for a minute.
As is 5-0, so yeah, Mary was terrified there. And with that, we will ask the clerk to read this by title only, not the entire thing.
Okay. And I'm going to assign a number. It's going to be 08-2012, and Ordinance Amending Chapter 5.01, Animal Services of the Clackamas County Code.
Okay. Now, it has been read by title only, and I will remind people that the second reading on this, where we actually will vote on the item, will be on July 26th at the regularly scheduled 10:00 AM business meeting. Thank you. Who knew? Talked about dogs this much. We have no discussion items, so we, that moves us on to the consent agenda. And I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda again by title only.
Okay. The Consent Agenda for July 12th, under Health, Housing and Human Services, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement Amendment Number Two with the City of Mulala, Mulala Adult Center to Provide Social Services for Clackamas County Residents. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement Amendment Number Three. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement, Amendment Number Three with the City of Oregon City Pioneer Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents aged 60 and over. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Community Development Division and the City of Wilsonville for building improvements to the Wilsonville Senior Center kitchen. Approval of Amendment Number Six to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services for the operation of the jobs program. Approval of an annual renewal of an intergovernmental agreement with Workforce Investment Council of Clackamas County for specialized workforce services. A board order approving the mental health director's designee to authorize a custody hold under ORS 426.22233. And under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And I'll continue, under Business and Community Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County, Washington County, Hood River County Library District, Fort Vancouver Regional Library District, and the City of Camas for continuing the Metropolitan Information Exchange. Under Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Commission on Children and Families for Juvenile Crime Prevention Funds. Under Community Corrections, approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Corrections. Under Water and Environment Services, approval of the Construction Services Agreement for the Tri-City Service District Secondary Clarifier Number One Rehabilitation Project. And approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Happy Valley and Clackamas County Service District Number One for reimbursement of the cost of the 129th Avenue Fish Passage Culvert Removal Project. And that's the end.
With that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lineiger and seconded by Commissioner Bernard that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on any items? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes 5-0 and is unanimous. And you'll, and for those of us watching us on, on the television, you'll notice the new look of our, of our website, where you can go and read more about any of these consent agenda items in more detail. But, so that's first I've seen that. And with that, I'll ask if there's a county administrator update at all.
I do have one, one item that came up last week. Oh, and this is Deputy County Administrator Laurel Butman. Thank you. A question came up last week about, from a citizen, about the difference between a box and a bundle of firewood. So I thought I'd just clarify that. There is no physical difference between a box and a bundle of firewood. However, it's more proper to say box because what they do is they put them in recycled containers, they're boxes. And, and this was in, in relation to fees, fees rising. And so we did raise the fees on the box of firewood due to fuel costs increases and labor cost increases. But we also added the ability to have a half a box of firewood. So a full box is $10, and a half box is $6.
Okay, good clarification. With that, we have Commissioner Communication, Commissioner Bernard.
I'd just like to start out, because I'm already almost 45 minutes late for another meeting, which is the EDC Permitting Process Assessment Committee Development Roundtable Meeting. And so I just, one of the comments was about the Elks Lodge. We, we obviously have not planned this because we don't know that we were, as far as I know, we don't know that we're going to get it yet, the Elks. And, and so there is no plan at all yet to tear it down and build low-income housing. And, and I guess I just have to comment about the, the word, I guess, low-income housing. It's called, another term is affordable housing. Most bankers, bank tellers, car mechanics, you know, the young ones, gas pump jockeys, we used to call them, and loop technicians and restaurant people, all live, can live in affordable housing. I think that to think of it anything other than people who have limited income is wrong. Milwaukee has an affordable housing unit on Main Street, which, under proper management, has been very successful. It's always full. In my neighborhood in Wilsonville, there's an affordable housing unit, which is always full, very successful. There is some requirement that some of those folks living there have some disabilities, either mental or physical. And so there are provisions for that. There's also opportunities. There's, there's actually a very nice unit that the county participated in. So I think that, first off, we have no plans for the Elks yet. We have, we don't even know if we got it. As far as I know, I haven't heard any different. And the other thing is affordable housing is nothing more than the word is, and that's, it's affordable. There are numerous communities throughout the nation that require a certain percentage of affordable housing wherever they are. Even Wilsonville has affordable housing requirements, often put on us by Metro. And I should hope that we have lots of variety of housing opportunities, and some of them should be affordable for those people who don't make the income that would be required to buy a home or, or certain types of homes, but would find the opportunity to live in something they can afford rather than be out on the street. There's nothing wrong with that. So I, I hope that when we get to planning this, we will definitely have community partners, community participation in whatever happens there that will assure that we do have affordable housing and that it's a mixed-use development is what we always talked about. So I'm going to head off to my meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity today to spend time with you.
Okay.
Well, just, just while we're on the subject, I want you to respond. I think there's three issues here, and Commissioner Bernard touched on one of them. But I think the one issue that, two issues that have kind of been forgotten is, number one, is that this particular facility offers, you know, amenities and services that the community is, you know, appreciates. And granted, it's in private hands, but there are, there are events that occur there that the public is welcome to. And so it'll be the facility, if it's, if it's missing or gone or purchased and, or closed. The community itself has, you know, has a lot of concerns about that. So that's one issue, I think. But the other issue, which I spoke to at our last business meeting, was really, there's nothing that really precludes us from having a public process to gauge interest in that element and maybe some of the elements that Commissioner Bernard spoke to, which some people have some issues with, maybe, or misunderstandings about. But I think that, you know, we have the opportunity, but for us to, I mean, because it's now, it now is public, that, you know, the housing authority, which we are at times convene as, has made, you know, a bid, and that's, that's now public knowledge. So, but we had no process ahead of that, in advance of that. So I think that's the piece that was conveyed by previous county commissioners and the, and the county in recent times, that anything that occurred on that, in that area, would there be process and nothing would occur there that the community didn't support. And yet there hasn't really been a process to discover whether or not there's support for that or not. So that's, that's, I think that is the crux of some of that. But I don't want people to think that the Elks Lodge is all about affordable housing and what that means or anything else. It's, it's more than that. All I, now that I have the, this is the Commissioner comment, so I'm just going to take this opportunity to remind people that our next Commissioner Roundtable meeting will be August 5th, I believe, at 5:30 at the building across the way, at the DSP Development Services Building. And I think really that's really all I have today. The only thing I really wanted to touch on, maybe, and we'll touch on it maybe at greater length next week on the dog barking issue. But there are things that we do do that staff has asked for more enforcement power for. That really has no, there's no victim. It's not a noise thing. It's not even frankly, even an eyesore. But when a small, little building infraction, if you will, like a fence maybe being too high, is actually, as I read, I'm working with the staff, when that becomes a level-one priority, and there's people out there suffering from tendonitis that are, you know, we have a lot of senior people that live out there, and that barking dog makes their life miserable. To me, I couldn't care less about the fence. So the fact that we're putting more priorities on the fence or a building structure issue that is considered a high priority, just kind of, again, that's, to me, not a quality of life issue.
Actually, the roundtable is on August 8th, Wednesday, August 8th.
Is it?
Yes.
I have wronged the date. Well, I'm corrected then. It should be the first Wednesday.
Then that's the first. Then it's the first.
August 1st, okay. I apologize. Duly noted. You're correct.
Well, what a, what a full meeting. I think we should revisit the dog issue. I was really happy today at the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation to advocate to make sure that the rural parts of Clackamas County that are not included in the J-PAC circle and that do not currently have an area commission on transportation, that we make sure that as the state, as ODOT distributes a bunch of millions of dollars worth of funding, that we need to make sure that, that we advocate strongly for and that ODOT has the mechanisms in place to listen to the needs of that part of our community, even though it's not in a structure called an ACT. So I felt good about the ability to advocate today for fair funding for road projects out in rural Clackamas County.
Right, and if I may, I just wanted, I saw that in the, at the meeting there this morning. I thought, I was kind of, I was thrilled to see that there. I just kind of mentioned to Commissioner Lineiger, who's our representative on J-PAC, that I think the case ought to be made further, just that, that those employment lands out there in the rural areas and the connections to them are part of the system, and that ought to be part of the emphasis. So I'm great to see that, that change. It's great.
Well, I just, I just briefly, because I know we're really running out of time. I'm just so grateful that summer is finally here. We've had this lovely last week of weather. Just to remind everybody of all the activities and events that are happening, I mean, every Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and throughout the week in the county, it is the time to be outside in Clackamas County. From farmers' markets to festivals, the Fourth of July weekend, there were parades and events across the county, and they continue outdoor concerts, you know, throughout. So please get outside and take advantage of that. I do want to share one little event that's coming up. Mary, were you able to find a little link for it? So I try not to promote Eagle Creek all that often, but I am the president of the Jackknife Zion Horse Heaven Historical Society, which owns and operates the, it's a mouthful, I know, which owns and operates the Philip Foster Farm National Historic Site in Eagle Creek. And this coming Sunday, they're having their Mary Charlotte's Garden Party, which is an opportunity to really celebrate the contributions of women on the Oregon Trail and especially the contributions of Mary Charlotte Foster, Philip Foster's wife. And so that, the farm is open from 11:00 to 4:00 every day, seven days a week. And for this event, the, it's open from 11:00 to 4:00. The event actually begins at 1:00. There'll be live music and fashion show, some treats and speakers. And if you haven't gotten a chance to get out there, I must say, the place is beautiful, and you would really enjoy stepping back in time. So come out to Eagle Creek and check it out.
And I would just add, besides all of the things that Commissioner Damon said to visit in the summer, is to not forget about Mount Hood and the recreation opportunities that are there in the summer. A lot of people think only about going to Mount Hood in the winter for ski and snow season, but actually, it is just as busy in the summer with a wide variety of outdoor activities and events for kids and families and people of all ages. So do think about visiting the mountain as well. It is fabulous weather in Clackamas County. And with that, there's no further business. We are adjourned.